Good evening, everybody. Oops. Good evening, everybody. The study session of January eleventh, twenty twenty-two is called to order. Carrie, would you roll call, please?
I will, Mayor Innesco. Mayor Innesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Bow.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson. She's having audio, but she is here, so. And Councilmember Sherman. Okay, all present.
All right. Tonight, we are going to discuss neighborhood residential zones. Community Development Director Mark Seager has information for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm going to share a screen here. Little PowerPoint presentation. And get started. First, I certainly want to thank the Development Code Steering Committee that has been meeting since May, working on the first of many changes that are going to come across to the council. This committee comprised of Len Williams, Marty Crowe, Keith Fuller, Hillary Browning, and John Allen, have spent a lot of time and thoughtful consideration in these meetings to bring some of these updates and recommendations to you today. I also want to thank other city staff, including Jason Dose and Sean Carlstrom and Keith Reedson and others who have helped out to get to this point today. So the focus of today is on neighborhood residential zone. And this is just, like I said, a first step in many to bring Shelton Municipal Code updates to the City Council for consideration. Although this isn't necessarily a finished product, these recommendations will address some of the immediate needs to provide for housing now and in the future here in the city. And these recommendations allow for increased density. And with those considerations will need to be addressed for some of the impacts with such density here in the future. Some of those readily identifiable impacts that we've talked about include the neighborhoods themselves and the sense of place and how those look and how those function. And we can address some of those in the design standards we'll talk about here in a little bit. Parking. If we talk about increased density, that means, you know, more houses, smaller lots, more parking, less room for some of those auxiliary vehicles, boats, RVs, things like that that tend to be pushed into the street and impact parking throughout neighborhoods. Pedestrian access, improved pedestrian facilities to provide access to amenities in our community. Obviously, traffic and the concentration of populations in certain areas can increase traffic and congestion. Parks and facilities, smaller lot sizes, denser developments, smaller backyards, increases need for parks and recreation, open space, and how we address that in the future with some of the tools that we have available to us at the city that are utilized now through the SEPA process, but really isn't, you know, it's not real clear and defined through our development code. It's a little... It's just, it's a bit ambiguous, and we have to do some negotiations and discussions upfront with some of the subdivision with developers for subdivisions. Schools are the same way. School impact fees need to be, or school impacts need to be addressed through SEPA. That's typically negotiated with the school district and developer, but it's not explicit in our code. So again, it's kind of ambiguous there. It needs to be addressed each time application comes forward.
Mark, if you would, real quickly, just for the benefit of our new council members, thirty thousand foot level explains SEPA, what it is and what it's supposed to do.
Yes, State Environmental Policy Act, so essentially identifies and reviews the impacts of a development or even code changes. We have to, if we bring code changes to the council, we have to go through a SEPA checklist and identify whatever impacts there might be to, well, to the environment, to the infrastructure, built environment in the city each and every time. So that goes for, like I said, code changes or I don't know all of the triggers, but typically subdivisions. Oh, let's see, single-family homes don't go through SEPA. They're categorically exempt. And then potential nuisances. Increased density might, you know, might bring nuisances closer to one another and more visible. This, I apologize for the map, is not a great rendition. But this is our city zoning map with the urban growth area. The neighborhood residential zone that we're talking about, I'll outline the city limits in red. This red boundary is city limits. The light blue on the outside is UGA, so outside the city limits at this time. And then the areas you see in white. And even if it's in kind of gray here, those are parcel boundaries per the map, so it's just the map kind of is shrunk down, so these parcels look really small, so it looks gray. But the areas in gray and white are neighborhood residential zones. You'll see the other colors. There are other zoning districts like industrial down here where SPI is on the waterfront, downtown zone here in green around Railroad Avenue, CRV, Commercial Residential Valley on both sides of that. So neighborhood residential zone is the predominant land zoning type within the city of Shelton. The district contains the bulk of the city's residential housing and consists of a mixture of contemporary subdivisions, multifamily housing, historic neighborhoods, an eclectic mixture of housing types and styles that were developed at different times to fill different needs for our residents throughout Shelton's history. These regulations recognize the need for flexibility to be exercised relative to the types and density of housing allowed, but also recognizes the value that good site design, interesting architecture, and thoughtful landscaping play in providing compatible infill development and more livable communities. I guess I'll start with any questions on zoning map right now before I move on to some of the code changes, or recommendations, I should say. Commissioner McDowell. Councilmember McDowell, sorry. Shows my age.
I think you're muted.
Yeah, there I am. Can you hear me now?
Gotcha.
Okay, I'm wondering why a single-family homes don't come under SEPA?
I'm going to defer to Jason Dose if he can probably answer that more succinctly than I can at this point.
Anything up to four dwelling units is exempt under state law. WAC one ninety-seven eleven eight hundred, to be exact, has about thirty-two exemptions that our state legislators have said SEPA does not apply to. So single-family is the most common.
Oh, even though the, even though the building would be maybe the same size as another building and the same amount of people, it doesn't have anything to do with that, right?
Correct, yeah. The same for, like, what comes to mind are commercial uses. Anything up to four thousand square feet is also exempt. Parking lots for up to twenty vehicles, that's exempt. Trying to, I don't have the exemptions in front of me, but those are the most common that come to mind. So it just has to do with the assumed impact of a project, you know? Anything less than four units is assumed to be a pretty benign impact overall, especially in an urban environment.
And the city certainly has some regulations to address some of the concerns, like our stormwater regs and things like that, that would address those development impacts.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'll move on. So in front of you now is a list of proposed amendments in chapter twenty-point-oh-eight, which is neighborhood residential zoning. These changes came about, like I said, through several meetings and discussions with our Development Code Steering Committee. And we think we have a kind of a comprehensive list of items that meet, you know, as I said, meet kind of the needs of the community for housing now and in the future. I'll start with lot sizes. These are minimum lot sizes. Our existing code has a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. The proposed change is down to forty-five hundred square feet. Duplexes, those are allowed one per block. Again, minimum lot size, six thousand square feet. We would retain that six thousand square foot minimum, but they'd be allowed on any legal lot within the city. So right now, duplex or a triplex is allowed one per block. They could go through a conditional use permit per our code to have another duplex or triplex built on the same block as one that is existing. So again, just under that, triplex is at six thousand square foot, existing, one per block. We bump that up to seventy-five hundred square foot on any legal lot. When we were discussing this, we really felt like it was really difficult to get a triplex on a six thousand square foot lot after we thought that we could identify some of those in the city right now. I don't think we did identify any. They were all built on a little larger lots. Once you take into lot coverage into consideration, off-street parking requirements, setbacks, and all the other requirements that would come into play. And then corner lots. This is something new that we're proposing at six thousand square feet. It just allows, because of sightlines and usable lots and setbacks, where somebody's on two streets, a frontage street and a flanking street, it really erodes into their usable lot size if you're looking at a forty-five hundred square foot lot. So this would address that and allow for more usable space for property owner on a six thousand square foot lot that is on a corner. Setbacks. We'd keep them at ten feet for the front yard, but add five feet onto that to a total of fifteen feet for carports and garages. Quite often, we see that off-street parking is in the driveway in front of a garage, and ten feet just doesn't allow for a clear path of travel for pedestrians on sidewalks and front of the streets. You know, many vehicles, not even large pickup trucks and things like that, can be longer than certainly ten feet, and ten feet is from the front of the building. So typically, people don't, you know, park touching their garage door. They'll be hanging over that sidewalk. It also kind of puts the house front and center on the street. Side yards remain at five feet. Flanking streets remain at seven, and again, to reiterate, the fifteen feet to carport or garage entries, this would be if a house is on a corner. And so their front is, the front of the house is on the street, but their garage is located around the flanking street. They would have that fifteen-foot setback for that garage or carport as well. Rear yard at fifteen feet as well, remaining. And then corner lots, this is something we ran into earlier this year, some older lots. The code reads that your frontage is on the narrowest part, on the narrowest part of your lot. So if you've got a sixty-by-one-hundred lot, your sixty-foot wide portion is your front of your property, so that would determine your front setback. Well, some of these older lots, especially larger lots, we've had building permits that have come across the table, and folks have wanted to do an addition. Well, that addition infringes upon maybe the setbacks in, on the side yard, which could be the backyard if the front of the house was on the flanking street. You might need to describe this a little better in detail. But in essence, it allows the applicant to determine what the frontage would be for their house. So if they can fit a remodel, an addition, an ADU, something like that, they can determine the frontage of their house and not impact, or still be able to continue with that development and not be limited based on the setbacks for front and for side and backyard. So I'm happy to try to clarify that a little more if anybody needs it, but it might take a picture. Mr. Mayor.
So if a house has the garage attached to it and they're all flush, does that mean the whole house has to be back fifteen feet?
New construction. Now, we're talking about new construction, but yes. If they want, if they wanted to leave it as such, then yes.
Okay, thank you. The intent really there with that requirement is to allow, you know, the habitable portion of a structure to be closer to the street, and then your garage, your kind of aesthetically more dead space, I guess, or less interesting, is then set back. So the prominent feature of a house isn't your garage door. That's the primary intent. And to provide more parking space, actual usable parking space. To add a little bit to that discussion, if you remember the sidewalks the city put in with one of our basin projects out behind the library, there were several older homes there with garages that used their driveway, as it were, for their onsite parking, because many had maybe even converted their garages or they're used for storage or whatever. And once we put in sidewalks, it eliminated their parking, to put aerial quotes around it, because now that we have sidewalks in, their parking space would literally block the sidewalk, which is illegal. So the intent is to get away from that in infill areas as we move forward, because eventually, it's hoped, we'll install curb gutter and sidewalks in all neighborhoods at some point in Shelton's future.
Thanks, Jason. Appreciate that clarity. To, oh, Councilmember McDowell, yes.
Yeah, okay, so here we have the corner lot. So the the house would be built. How would the house be built? Corner lot. Does the builder get to choose which street they get to have their front on? Or how does that work?
Yes, exactly right.
Okay, so if we've got Fourth Street and Fifth Street coming to a corner, they could choose which one they want their their house to sit on.
Their frontage, correct. And then that establishes the setback. So if they built it on Fourth Street, you know, the flanking street, you know, on Fifth, would be a side street. And then obviously, the backyard setback would be fifteen feet behind that. And so the frontage would determine the side setbacks and rear yard setbacks.
Okay, I got that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
As a little background, I mean, I deal with most of our single-family residences at the front counter when people are coming in to build, and I'll speak with a designer, a homeowner, a builder, what have you. And it's a true statement. A lot of times when I'll tell them what their setbacks are, and maybe they've, in their design, they've mixed up what our code defines as the front and the flanking street. They meet setbacks if they could choose it, but I have to tell them, well, no, actually, this narrower frontage is your front. And they'll try to correct me. They'll say, well, no, but this is the front of the house on this side. I'm like, yeah, I realize that, but our code says that's your front setback. So the intent here was to make it a little more user-friendly, I think.
Okay.
Okay, development coverage existing is fifty percent for any impervious surface on a lot. That would remain with the caveat of a ten percent addition if somebody wanted to construct an accessory dwelling unit. So this just allows a little more flexibility for some ADUs to be constructed in the city, which was one of the goals coming out of this. And then removing the owner occupancy requirement for accessory dwelling units. This was a push through the legislature as well, and it's certainly something that makes more sense here locally to add to housing stock and flexibility in housing. Councilmember Bow, see your hand up?
Yes, indeed. I had a few questions on this section. I'm just wondering about why we are not raising our height limit? Is my first one. Why are we not addressing that? Because we definitely can't sprawl out much more. Why are we not going up more?
I think we talked about this a little bit. Because we're just addressing single-family residences, duplex and triplexes, that there wasn't a great need to increase the height limit at this point, because it serves those purposes. That's something we certainly will talk about when we start talking about cottage houses, row houses, townhouses, and other housing stock like that. So I think we will address that.
We have some pretty, you know, we've got some pretty decent parking standards, which I like, because I don't want to become like Seattle and have no parking on your lot. But if you could take a triplex and make it four stories, well, then you could put a whole bottom floor of parking and alleviate a lot of your outside parking. And it just, even in this realm, to me, it makes sense, because I don't think many people are going to build a four-story, single-family home necessarily, but we can build up to a triplex on these sized lots. And if you go to a triplex, from what I understood, you have to now put handicap accessible parking, which is a very large parking spot, and to fit handicap parking on a seventy-five hundred square foot slot, plus the rest of your parking spaces, it really starts to cramp that lot. You actually can barely do it. So that's where, I would see, I would see a need for that. And then the second one I have is a flat roof. I know we have some roof design that might be the next section, but, you know, flat roofs aren't allowed in Shelton right now. And, you know, there's quite a few things with that. I mean, one, if you can have more livable square footage on top of your home, you cannot have to put so many patios. So now we don't have to take up as much impervious square footage, which we're really concerned about impervious square footage on lots. That would actually alleviate a lot of that. You could have a fifteen-hundred, two-thousand square foot impervious surface on top of your home that actually doesn't even add to that. So those are my two for this section.
Thank you. Anybody? Oh, Councilmember Sherman, sorry. I'm not used to looking for that hand.
Yes, this is the first time I've done that. Anyways, I do have a quick question, just so I can understand a little clarification here. So I see that you're changing your single-family from the existing six thousand square feet to forty-five hundred square. My question is, let's say hypothetically, you have a lot that's nine thousand or bigger. Does that mean you could subdivide that?
Correct.
Okay, and then would you sell it separately? So does the city give you, do you just get separate zoning and all that for that? How does that all work?
Well, if it's located in the neighborhood residential zone now, and you have a nine thousand square foot lot, you could go through the land use process to segregate that lot, separate that lot, and short plat, essentially, and create two lots, two forty-five hundred square foot lots that remains in neighborhood residential zoning. And any codes that apply to that zoning would apply to that new lot that's created. So same setbacks that we're talking about here, same height restrictions, same lot coverage, any design standards, anything like that would apply to that newly created lot as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember McDowell.
One more question. So Councilmember Bow said that flat roofs are, I know the danger of flat roofs in this in this country with all the rain and everything that comes down. What is the reason for not having, allowing flat roofs in the city?
Well, I think we're referring to CRV. Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, or we were referring to CRV where we've got some design standards that want to mimic the existing architecture and northwest architecture, which aren't typically flat roofs, but I'll let Jason clarify that for me.
Correct, yeah. The design standards in some of our mixed-use zones, so that'd be mixed-use, low-intensity commercial and Commercial Residential Valley actually have design standards that want a pitched roof, not a flat roof, because if you go through those zones, that's largely the types of roofs you see. We do allow flat roofs in zones like the downtown, where you see more western storefront architecture, and our general commercial zone, which is like Neyland Plaza, the areas on each side of Olympic Highway, those certainly allow flat roofs. Because they're more, that's more of a, I don't want to say "commercial," but I will. In this town, it's more of a commercial design, a flat roof structure.
Well, I noticed in Olympia, a lot of the apartment, newer apartment buildings, like up near the Community College, South Beach Sound, they have flat roofs, but they have patios on them. So like, Councilmember Bow was saying, you know, patios for the top, that would cut down, you know, the space on the ground. I don't know if that could be done as far as patios go.
I think it certainly can be done. It needs to be done with neighboring properties in mind, obviously. You know, we have impacts to neighboring properties, and we talk about a small lot and a rooftop terrace that looks down in the backyard of a neighbor.
Yeah.
We just need to consider where those would be located, how they function, but certainly can be considered, particularly when you're dealing with some height restrictions for multifamily housing. That's a unique way to achieve more units.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mark and Jason, if you could, maybe address, you talked about CRV and mixed use and those kind of things. Are flat roofs prohibited in neighborhood residential zone we're talking about tonight?
I think with the design standards we're proposing, they are. I don't believe they are currently. There's no requirement you have a pitched roof.
In neighborhood residential.
In neighborhood residential.
In neighborhood residential right now.
Except for the part that's in the historic district, okay.
Correct.
Anything else on neighborhood residential here before we jump into the next slide? And feel free to, if something pops in your head when we come back, feel free. So these are essentially new requirements or proposed new requirements for neighborhood residential zoning in design standards. Design standards help address the impact of greater densities that we're talking about just a few minutes ago. They create more pleasing, both visually and functionally, structures in addressing the visual impact of extra dwelling units, including ADUs, duplexes, and triplexes, as more and more of those are built. Design standards are suggested to encourage variety in new and infill development, while promotion of growth does not erode Shelton's small-town nature and unique sense of place. Design should protect privacy, sustain and create attractive and functional neighborhoods, and provide quality living environments. So you'll see these proposed standards for every single-family home, accessory dwelling unit duplex or triplex within the neighborhood residential zone, the big white area of the map. So all facades should contain one of the three following, the contrasting trim on wall openings or corners, integrated trim in windows or doors, or contrasted siding or other materials. This breaks up, you know, obviously, the frontage, you have these big blank walls and uninteresting facades. Roof overhang of minimum of six inches. A porch or covered entry for the primary entrance, a minimum of twenty square feet of roof area. And then we do have the ability for essentially an appeal or the ability for a builder, owner to seek another something in lieu of those features based on an analysis that they provide. So those would be required. And then we go into kind of a menu, a list, if you will, to provide some flexibility. So again, for architectural design, it ensures the variety in architecture to reduce the dominance of garages on the streetscape. As Jason mentioned earlier, applicants for new residential development shall demonstrate compliance with the following provisions at the time of building permit application. So we have front facade variety. So dwellings with the same front facade located on the same side of the street shall be separated by no no less than four lots, and dwellings with the same front facade located on opposite sides of the street shall be separated by no less than four lots, with a lot directly across the street not included in the four lot calculation. So this separates the same With a lot directly across the street not included in the four lot calculation. So this separates the same design along the street. Uh, in this context, a lot directly across the street means the lot with which the greatest portion of the frontage aligns with the frontage and subject, but sometimes these don't line up perfectly, you know? If I'm looking across the street from my lot, I don't look across the street and see lot lines line up exactly with the lot across the street. So this gives staff guidance uh, to address that uh, requirement. Uh, front facade features, uh, single-family residents shall contain a minimum of three elements from the list that I'll show you. Um, with a minimum of one element from the structural and one from the decorative elements list. Uh, duplexes are a minimum of five, so it's three from the structural and three from the decorative. And triplexes are seven elements and three from, that minimum of three from each. And this little box shows you the structural elements and options for structural elements, including dormers, gables, hip gable, gambrel, mansard or similar pitch roofs. Uh, bay windows, uh, twelve-inch minimum offset from one exterior wall to the other. Uh, any balconies offsetting your roofline twelve inches from the top surface, one roof to the other. Uh, recessed building entry at least two feet deep by four feet wide. Um, or um, another proposed feature in lieu of one of these. So again, a single-family residence would pick one of these from from this list in the structural elements. Uh, one from the decorative elements that I'll show you in the next slide, and then one more from either of the list. So three total. And I'll move on to the decorative elements and we can answer any questions. So decorative elements, as you see there, include uh, decorative garage door. That can mean windows in the door. Um, some, some type of uh, feature, you know, raised panel, something like that. Uh, decorative eve or barge boards. Um, decorative shingles or varied siding up in the gables. We see a lot of people put um, uh, you know, board and bat maybe up in their gables and have lap siding below. Um, decorative uh, siding um throughout the the structure, uh, any shed roofs above the windows, uh, enlarged trim over the garage door, the uh, header that's at least six inches wide. Uh, knee or eve braces, um, brick, stone, cedar accents, something like that. Um, that uh, you'll see kind of Wayne's Cut, outdoor Wayne's Cut on some of the houses with brick or stone quite often. Uh, ten percent of the front facade, uh, again, variable siding user to using two or more types of that siding to break it up. Um, horizontal lap siding, belly band cladding and shutters or louvers. And so a single-family residence would select one of these decorative elements. Um, and then again, one of the structural and then um, they'd have one more to choose from uh, ahead of both of the lists. And um, other than the note at the bottom, structural, structural elements other than colored glass or lighting approved by the community development director. So they could come up with uh, something else to propose to to staff to meet the needs here. So now answer any questions you might have based on design standards. Councilmember Sherman?
Yeah, I have a bunch of questions.
Great.
So what design standards currently have? Are they in here already?
We currently don't have design standard, single-family residential.
And so, so they don't, I mean, they completely different, differ from anything we have because we currently have none. So is this just because it's aesthetically pleasing or is it for safety in any way, shape or form?
Um, no, this is, this is sense of place, sense of neighborhood, uh, the the development of neigh- development of those neighborhoods and how how they look and how they function. So mo- most, there's, there's nothing, nothing that's identified in the building code here that is necessary. You know, there's nothing structural. So knee, knee or eve braces could be certainly structural, but they're, but in this instance, they're decorative elements. And intended to do that and to break up the 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 architectural features on a house um, from from one house to another in a neighborhood.
So can you give an example of um, maybe an area where they have instituted these rules, maybe versus a place that has not? Because I'm trying to understand how um, let's say hypothetically, I'm going to build a house myself. And I'm like, I, I'm limited on funds, let's say. And maybe I can only afford part of these elements, but I need a home. So I'm just trying to understand how it's uh, necess- how necessary it is.
So the necessity is 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 based on obviously um, council's will. Um, what what we want, what we want our neighborhoods to look like, what we want our communities to look like. Um, we've had feedback from from builders within our development code committee. Um, we've looked at other other jurisdictions that have instituted these, including local jurisdiction that ha- that have not these, but but design standards within the neighborhood residential zones, including neighboring communities like Olympia and Lacey and places like that. Um, I didn't look for necessarily um, cities that did not have those. You know, um, because we were looking at increased density and bringing in um, you know, and and the impacts of that. Uh, so the the builders that we have, oh, let me, one caveat, I guess, I should say, we do have similar design requirements for lots under forty-five-hundred square feet now, because we do have some three-thousand square foot lots within the city of Shelton that were platted. How long ago, Jason?
Uh, late eighteen hundreds primarily.
Quite some time ago. And so we actually have a representative on the development code steering committee that belt on some of those houses and met those design requirements. And we talked about that within one of our meetings and how that translates to uh, these proposed changes and really didn't raise any concerns. I mean, it was, it was a conversation, obviously. Uh, but felt like those are re- they were reasonable um, requirements to meet, to meet the goals um, that we were proposing uh, to the committee.
Yeah, thank you.
I I have a question.
Yeah, I see two hands, three hands.
Oh, go ahead.
Please, Mr. Mayor, I'll let you decide.
Oh, based on that three-thousand square foot scenario that you just mentioned. So we have a house on a three-thousand square foot lot and it burns down. And they want to rebuild it. We just don't ever rebuild a house there again?
Oh, no, absolutely they can.
Oh, okay.
They just have to meet our development standards per the code.
But if it's, if it's still three-thousand square foot lot?
It's it's a legally planted lot. So yeah, sorry, um, I should have been more clear with that. The code, the code does stipulate at the date of of the adoption of of any code amendments, any legally planted lots before that date are still legal lots.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Councilmember McDowell. Oh, mute again.
You're still muted, Kathy.
Okay, here I am. You hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we're not talking about just planned neighborhoods. We're talking about anybody that buys an empty lot in the city of Shelton. And they, they they have to go by what's on this list.
This would apply to infill lots as well, yes.
Okay, so it's not just neighborhoods, planned neighborhoods, but it's I go up the street and see an empty lot. I want to build a house. I I go with what's on the list.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and to be, I I guess for for an example, um, somebody from the building committee can, maybe can correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially you use T-one-eleven. Um, don't wrap your windows, corners of your doors, and don't have a covered patio. Um, you don't meet these codes, but if you wrap, wrap your windows, wrap your corners, have a little bit of a a covered patio on a single-family house and put a six-inch um, bellyboard above your garage door, y- you can meet these standards. And I think most people are doing that now. Most spec homes at a minimum are meeting those now, and they're probably doing a little more than that now. We're seeing, we're seeing lap siding on most houses. Um, we're, we're seeing their, their, their windows wrapped. Um, we're seeing some type of um, decorative brick or stone work in a lot of, a lot of these as well. Um, some are even doing the um, the barge border decorative ease on these as well. So a a lot of the houses that were, that are coming through right now, we're, we're seeing them meet these minimum standards.
I am not a builder and I'm clueless to what, what does it mean to wrap a window?
Just up exterior trim. You've got.
I see. Oh, got it. Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Bod, please.
Yeah, I think you guys are putting a pretty reasonable amount on them. My biggest concern with these ever are just us being really clear because there's nothing worse than going in and being told somebody doesn't like something or it doesn't meet that. But just, just so we have real clarity, it's, it's, it's really nice to just have the checklist style and maybe expand upon what's acceptable. Because you you come in and you love doing this, but the city doesn't like it. If that makes any sense at all.
Yeah. I I appreciate that. We've talked about that at, on a staff level on how to implement this and how to roll it into not only our, our our, our building permits now, if we're hard copies, but also when intergavs implemented and um, and and communicate that with our, with our community and then have, have that sort of a menu list. You know, and and be able to have somebody that that is applying for the, for a building permit in the city, really see all the possibilities they could check off the list. And frankly, they can check off what they're already doing anyway, and it's clear to them when they come across the counter uh, to submit.
Awesome.
And we'll, we'll certainly reach out. We'll, we'll run that through our development code committee. Um, we'll certainly reach out to our stakeholders on on what makes sense, you know, um, to them. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of builders in town, which is good and bad. We can, we can reach out to all of them that had built a single-family house in the last two years and get their input. So um, that's, that's a resource that we'll utilize.
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Hey, Mark. Thanks a lot. Hey, um, I just wanted to make a couple of quick points. Uh, first, I agree with the uh, point that Councilmember Bod brought up about things being clear and straightforward and understood, easily understood. Um, and I assume um, the development code committee has um, essentially agreed that what's being proposed right now is clear and straightforward. For the most part.
Um, well, what what you're seeing now isn't, isn't necessarily the proposed code. Obviously, you'll, you'll see that in in next steps. Um, but how it's written in the code and then how we portray it um, wi- in a building permit, I think we can do in two different ways. You know, we can, I think we can uh, highlight it within the building code or within permit processes, I guess. Um, that may be a little more clear than within uh, uh, an adopted ordinance and the, and the, and the twenty-oh-eight, you know, um, neighborhood residential code because our, our design standards are, you know, twelve, fifteen pages long. So it might get lost in there, but we certainly can bring those, bring these out and highlight them within a building permit package to make it more clear.
Yeah, I guess I I I'm putting a lot of uh, faith in the, you know, the, in the committee here that they're gonna vet this all out. Um, as you know, as not a builder, right, and not planning on building a house anytime soon, but um, so yeah, so the, that firsthand knowledge of of some of these things, it would be good to just make sure we get the the seal of approval from the, the committee. Um, I I did have a couple more general uh, questions, but I I want to wait and let you finish your point, but there was one design maybe item um, that I was going to quickly ask is, do we, do we prescribe or do um, I don't want to ask this. Is there ever a situation in a neighborhood residential zone that this would not apply? And I don't mean to try to stump you on anything, but I'm just, I'm thinking of those moments where people think uh, something is like a waiverable or um.
Um, I guess the only time it may not apply is, is on a, on a less than substantial renovation. So anything over fifty percent um, i- is con- is considered a substantial improvement to a structure. And so that's, that's the point when um, current building code kicks in, and that's, that's the point when we would propose that um, design standard to kick in as well. So anything under that on an existing structure um, is the only thing I can think of off the top of my head where, where, you know, would not apply.
Thank you.
Fifty percent of what? The cost or?
Valuation of the structure.
Okay.
And that can be, that can be county assessed value or an appraisal um, submitted to the city.
Awesome. Thank you.
And uh, Councilmember Schmidt, just to reiterate, um, I I wouldn't be in front of you tonight if the steering code committee um, didn't, did not have a consensus to move it to this point. So um, granted, this isn't, you're not seeing the, the edited code at this point. We, we will see that later in 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 a public hearing. Um, but breaking it down to this, this point was the best way I felt to present it. So and we certainly have those, those five people at our disposal. Um, I've got their cell phone numbers and email addresses and I'll, I'll utilize it to uh, reach out to them to uh, further, further vet this and and provide as much input as we can. So we have a, we have a product that um, that is um, you know, the easily um, and easily accessible to our building community. Councilmember Nisco, I saw your hand up.
Just one more question. Would these standards affect uh, like a new manufactured home that you'd purchased down the road at Washington Home Center?
Yes.
So long as they have these standards, then we're, we still accept them.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Councilmember McDowell.
Um, how, how does this tie in with our historical districts and our historical homes?
So historic districts have, have their own code section. And so those go through a pro- review, uh, appropriate, appropriate this review um, from the historic preservation board. So they, they do an actual review, ar- architectural review of the structure to make sure it conforms and fits into the historic district that is being proposed in.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
I'm just following up to your point, Mark, that we're reaching out with the code committee and for other public that will be providing feedback, of course. We've talked a lot about builders. Have we reached out directly to the Mason County Master Builders? Um, I know we have Keith Fuller here from the Realtors, but those two groups come to mind as kind of a wealth of knowledge, experts in the area um, to provide kind of that fresh perspective um, to staff on some of these things.
I, I reached out to the Olympia Master Builders. Um, I haven't heard back just yet, but to be fair, it was just a couple of days ago.
Yeah, they, when we started the committee, we did reach out to Olympia Master Builders and provided them the opportunity to sit on the committee and they declined. Um, but we'll provide them updates at the appropriate times um, to get, to get further feedbacks. And that appropriate time is after the study session. Uh, frankly, wanted to get some input from the council uh, well in advance uh, prior to us bringing it back to the council for um, a public hearing and we'll reach out to them. They can uh, reach out to their membership for what it is here in Mason County and provide us um, provide us feedback at that time. Anything else? So next steps is what we're talking about. So um, tentatively, um, with your comments uh, tonight, um, we would refine chapter um, twenty-point-oh-eight, I excuse me for the typo, and twenty-point-six-four, which is um, uh, design standards. And uh, bring that back to the council on March first for a public hearing. Um, with adoption, two weeks later, uh, we have sent off uh, edited uh, code sections to commerce. We, we're required to do a sixty-day review through the Department of Commerce. Uh, sent that off and we'll start a SEPA checklist uh, for these as well, as we talked about earlier. For these uh, for these edits and revisions as well. And so that's kind of a next steps for, for this chapter, and we look forward to more public comment um, during the public hearing uh, as well, uh, hopefully from part of the uh, the steering committee as well at that point. Uh, and then after that, we're working on future chapters and revisions. Like I said, this is, this is going to be a long process. Um, the development code committee is reviewing uh, str- Um, the development code committee is reviewing, uh, street standards this week, actually, Thursday, including infill requirements, uh, for street standards. Uh, we have some edits to chapter 18 with building and fire codes. Um, we really want to address, uh, other forms of housing like cottage housing, uh, fourplexes, townhouses, uh, row houses and things like that, how they fit into neighborhood residential zones, uh, how they fit into some of those mixed use zones. Um, you know, and compatibility issues are, are, um, you know, have to be taken in consideration. You, you put, um, multifamily residential units into a predominantly single-family, uh, residential, um, neighborhood. And, um, those neighbors tend to have concerns and how those are addressed. So we need to consider all those, uh, in moving forward and make sure we're, um, make sure we, um, address any of those potential concerns upfront. Um, we have parking, uh, requirements that we want to review and bring back. Um, permit processing, um, part of, uh, the comments I heard here tonight is, is clarity. Um, the, the, um, the, you know, having everything, you know, upfront known and, 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 and transparent. And so part of that is updating the permit processing part of our code and then infill specific standards. So some more standards that would address infill, uh, specific, um, situations. And maybe there's some more, uh, flexibility as we talked about tonight, um, that, uh, the council would want to address for infill standards. But, uh, in, in all cases, um, not just neighborhood residential, but, uh, that, that's where you're primarily going to see it. So. That's, uh, that's kind of next steps, but I'm hoping any more questions that you may have.
I have one question, Mark.
Please.
Yeah, uh, so we live in a historical house, but it's not in a historical neighborhood. So my house burns down and I want, I've slummed my house. I want the exact same house. I will have to go by these list of specifications or would there be? Would I be able to build a house just like I'm living in right now? No.
Your, your house, your house, your house meets every one of those standards and more.
Okay, yours checks like 14, 18 of those.
Oh, oh, that's nice. Yeah, okay, thank you.
You bet. We'd, we'd love to have your house built all over the city. Um, architecturally, I think that, that blends in well and, and is, is a great representation of the architecture in town.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt?
So, uh, councilmember Sherman brought up a good point, uh, about, which she's getting at is just that housing affordability aspect and preventing. Yeah, we don't want to encumber, uh, people from being able to, you know, build a house, uh, that is affordable for, you know, the average family to live in. So what I could see through the presentation and the materials today is it doesn't seem to me like anything here would be like a major deal breaker. You know, we're not asking people, not forcing people to build that like in-ground pools or, you know, anything extraordinary here. It's, it's just simple, fairly simple. And so I, I guess I'm comfortable with that. Um, just as long as, you know, staff and the committee understand that, you know, that is a pretty important piece, especially, you know, we get in the infill discussions and things like that. We want to, we want to encourage the development, but we, we also don't want to just accept anything, um, you know what I mean? Because that could be even a bigger problem. Um, but, you know, I, I'm just, I think it's important for us to just keep that in mind. And at the same time, being, you know, being cautious about being overly prescriptive. Um, because I think that opens another can of worms as well. I think we kind of struck a, a pretty good balance here. Um, and, you know, I, um, would be interested in just kind of hearing a little bit more about, um, as we, as we move along with this. And Jeff, I'm not sure if it's maybe something you can kind of just educate me on for a little bit. But, you know, kind of the, the big picture, you know, you talked about community life and, you know, that's obviously a big priority of ours is, you know, code enforcement and cleaning up the, cleaning up the existing messes that, that are around town. But, um, how does this particularly, you know, address that? And I'd just be interested in kind of learning more, more specifics on that. I don't need examples tonight, but, um, you know, just, just where does this kind of nexus come back? And I know, you know, I want to, community, you know, I want to create that community where people want to, want to be, want to live, they're proud of it. And, you know, I think this is kind of one of those steps in the framework of doing that. But, um, you know, it'd be good to just learn a little bit more about, you know, the kind of the bigger picture, longer-term plan here. So.
Sure. Sure. And I, just real quickly, we can go into this in much more in depth, but, uh, to me, uh, councilmember Schmidt or deputy mayor Schmidt, you mentioned, um, uh, community life as one of the three strategic goals. One of the bullet points under that is, uh, to promote pride in local neighborhoods. Uh, one of the ways we do that is not have, uh, cookie cutter neighborhoods. I think I remember one of my very first conversations with, uh, with the entire council was, um, you know, you don't want, uh, to be driving down the street and not know which house is yours when it's dark and raining like it is tonight. You know, uh, they each need to look a little bit different and it, it promotes, uh, is, uh, Mark mentioned, it promotes a sense of place, a unique sense of place. And that's what we're trying to get to. And, uh, the affordability component of that is a point well taken. Uh, one of the things that we did do to address that, um, and Mark was probably going to mention, I'm stealing his thunder, but, uh, taking the minimum lot size down a little bit, uh, that promotes, uh, housing affordability. And we'll do other pieces to the infill specific standards that are on that list of next steps. Uh, we'll have components to it that encourages that infill development because the infrastructure is already in place. You don't have to add new, which means our crews don't have to maintain additional miles of line, all those types of things. Uh, factor into what we're considering here. And the clarity point, uh, that was made earlier is, uh, is incredibly important too, is one of the driving factors behind, uh, developing new standards, um, developing new code is so nobody has to guess. We can't make it a hundred percent, um, uh, clear, uh, because there will always be situations that come up. But we can definitely make it as clear as possible now. And then you'll notice a couple of, on a couple of slides that were shown earlier. Uh, a fact-specific analysis, uh, will lead to the development, community development director's interpretation of the code. Uh, and that's because we recognize that there are unique situations. And if somebody can propose a feature or an element that would meet what we're looking for, we can add that to the list. So we won't have to continually make those new, um, fact-specific analysis. Uh, we keep those in a book, um, called Directors Interpretations, and eventually I think it'll be about that thick, but all those types of things that we're, uh, we're, uh, we're talking about, um, is intended to increase clarity. Uh, so people can look at the code and know exactly what's, uh, what we expect. And that should lessen the opportunity for miscommunication, uh, and encourage development.
I just had a question for the council, um, and not necessarily wanting to put anybody on the spot, but is there anybody that's like strongly opposed to this going down this road? Um, I think we've all kind of been nodding our heads on this, but I just curious if there's anybody that's got any strong reservations about proceeding. Fair enough.
I like where it's headed.
Sorry, I, I, I think I cut you off.
I was just saying, I like where we're headed for sure.
I would just like to kind of maybe talk to some people in the community and see how they feel about it before I jump in one way or another, all the way.
Yeah, I'll follow up. Is there any additional information you'd like from staff or the development committee that we can provide to you? Um, we've got a, a, a broad range of, of interests, uh, on that committee. Um, and I think they represent affordable housing and, uh, and, you know, and real estate and, um, you know, city residents and, and folks that live just outside the city, uh, within the UGA. And I think they provide a great perspective. And if, if there's something that I'm not, I haven't portrayed to you that, um, from, from their perspective, I'm happy to provide that to the council.
I only had kind of a procedural question. Um, it looks like we're going to do this in chunks. You had kind of talked about multifamily dwellings and things like that as a separate piece, um, beyond a triplex. What's, you know, what's the, what's the advantage of doing that? I'm thinking there's actually maybe from, you know, just my quick thought on that. And I think that might be more of a pain than it would be a benefit in doing this all kind of in just one, one chunk as opposed to piecemealing it out there. Cause I think you, we're going to be chasing around, you know, the differing standards. I mean, I know what you're doing, but it's, it's, it might just get confusing. I don't know. Is it, you guys know better than I would on that. I just, I'm not sure if that's a, a good idea or a bad idea, but just wanted to throw that out there.
The, the, the intent, the intent for this, I think this is a immediate impact that the council can make some decisions on that could address housing needs right now, you know, a, a 4,500 square foot lot, ADUs, um, you know, with, with less restrictions, duplex, triplexes. Those could happen tomorrow. If, if we start bringing all of the, the breadth of code changes, um, to you in one, in one package, that could be a year from now. And then we miss out on a year of, of this potential development housing stock that could be, um, brought, brought to the city of Shelton. So that, that's, that's the intent. Um, it's, 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 it's a, it's a pretty big, you know, task to get through this. Um, we want to make sure we do it right. And so we're, we're, we're taking time. We have to be, um, cognizant of, of our volunteers' time as well. Um, so, um, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be some steps down the road, but we certainly want to be able to have, have a, have some impact in, in the near future. Councilmember Bowe?
Yeah, I definitely agree with the way you're doing it. Chunked is, in my opinion, is the best way. Because you guys could dump so much on us that we would be reading a book for days and there's just no way we'd be able to comprehend it all. This way we, we get to really understand what this is, think about it, take it back to people that we want to talk to about it, to our constituents or whoever. And it's just nice bite-sized pieces. Um, so I, I, I love the way you're doing it.
And I, I'd argue bullet point three under future chapters. I mean, more than likely, that's going to be kind of the wholesale overhaul of our planned unit development regulations. And I've, you know, for the longest time working for the city, I had hoped someone would apply for a planned unit development for the flexibility it allows in development in, uh, you know, building type, uh, you know, structure type. But what I've also learned after now working on my third, um, its flexibility is also it's kind of shortcoming because there's really no assuredness. What it, meaning as a developer, I can't read those regulations and know if I do X, I can get Y. Right? So it, it's almost flexibility to the point where you're not really sure what you can do. And I, I've talked that through with our three developers that have done, um, PUDs. One is still going through it and they've provided really good input. So, you know, we haven't crafted any chapters yet on that or any revisions. But, um, I, I think I have marching orders on how to start to address it anymore.
So this wouldn't apply today to a PUD or subdivision?
It, it would.
A subdivision.
But as it applies specifically to those higher density multifamily projects, the only way you're going to do that in the NR zone, at least as we have it written currently, is through a planned unit development on a parcel of an acre or more. And, uh, that's, that's where I think we could make things a little more direct for developers. Tighten up the design standards, tighten up the expectations, that sort of thing.
Is the Veterans Village a planned unit development?
Correct, yes.
Ah, okay.
Yep.
Well, I, I think the projects have, have, have by and large turned out really well. Uh, the YMCA was a planned unit development. Um, you know, they're, they've so far so good, but it, there are some bumps in the road that you guys don't see when we're working with the developer.
Is this also, sorry, I don't mean to monopolize the conversation. Jump in if I'm, somebody needs, wants to talk. But is, is it also reasonable to assume that this improves or could help us with, um, sort of streamlining the permitting process? If, if we're laying this out and then I'm going to ask one more question. So if we're kind of laying this out as very, in a very clear way, I assume it would save a lot of staff time of going back and forth explaining things, correct? I mean, so this is a good thing ultimately from that perspective.
I'll, I'll, I'll take this one. So what we're trying to do is, uh, decrease the number of times a project has to be submitted, commented on, resubmitted. Uh, if there's clear standards there, it makes it much easier for a developer or a builder to take a look at the code, know what the expectation is, submit it one time. Uh, which definitely helps prevent timelines. It definitely helps staff time, uh, in review of these projects. Uh, because you, you check off the list, you know, yes, it has, um, a belly band. Yes, it has this, done, done, done. Uh, the other part with, uh, uh, streamlining the code for planning developments, um, that i- we want to remove some of the ambiguity. And there's a fine balance there because you want to have flexibility because that's what a planned unit development is all about. But there is such a thing that, there is such a thing as too much, uh, flexibility and it causes, uh, paralysis by analysis. You have so many options of what you can do that you can't settle on the best outcome for whatever your piece of property is. And finding that balance isn't easy, but it's definitely doable and, uh, it needs to be adjusted over time. Uh, as new, uh, new design concepts come in, uh, I think I've mentioned to you all, uh, more than, more than a couple of times that, uh, code writing has never done. And there's, you know, a couple of reasons for that. One, if there's an opportunity there, we need to be able to, uh, to address it, uh, relatively quickly. But we need to get to a point where a professional development company, a, uh, single builder or, uh, your neighbors down the street, if they want to do something, we can point them where to look. Anybody can read it and understand what's necessary. And if they don't completely understand, Jason's available, but reduce the impact on, uh, Jason's time to be able to interpret that stuff, uh, and a process to get the permits through more quickly.
My last question is just exploratory, you know, is it worthwhile when we're going through this, um, kind of at this juncture? Um, is it worthwhile to potentially consider purchasing some stock plans that, uh, meet the design, the, you know, the future design criteria or the implemented design criteria? Um, you know, as a, as an incentive for the affordable housing discussion. I know some cities have done similar things to that. It might be a good time to talk about that again and understand better what the pros and cons would be.
Sure, I think we can consider that, uh, once these are adopted in code, um, so we know what, uh, what council's expectations for. Any other questions? Don't see any.
So, moving on. Does the council have any additional items for discussion tonight? New items?
I, I have one.
Sure.
It, it somewhat ties into this. Um, I was approached by someone recently and they were asking about our, uh, our homes that are either like owned by the city and distressed or ones that are backed up with the city. Like there's some lots that people owe money to the city on and, and they're, they're pretty nasty. Or, uh, homes that have been condemned. And they were wondering about if the city has any programs that they're willing to work with investors for the investor to be able to come in, not have to purchase that, have it held by the city, renovate it, sell it, and then get a percentage of that back, uh, as the developer for them using their own money. They would take care of everything and the city would basically just do nothing other than get paid for their permits and then take in the cash flow from the sale minus whatever fees the developer does.
I've seen program, yeah, I've seen programs like that in other states. Uh, the thing that, uh, is can, not concerning, but the thing that we really have to be careful of, particularly in Washington state, is there's a constitutional provision against cities lending credit.
Credit though.
Right, but we just have to be very careful of that. So we can definitely look into it and see if we can apply it here. I think it's a great way.
The, the city would still own, all they would do, they would be the one who came in and actually invested all the money. The city would still own, all they would do, they would be the one who came in and actually invested all the money. And, and then just got a return on their money at the sale of the home.
Yeah, I would just want to get a legal opinion just to make sure that we're in the clear, I mean, it sounds like we would be, but I want a lawyer to weigh in and I'm not a lawyer.
No, don't totally get it, neither am I.
So, yeah, we can definitely take a look at that.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Anything from Jeff Knight, our city manager?
No, looking forward to seeing you next week and, well, one thing. I've gotten your committee request from a couple of council members, whether you want to stay with what you have. Or switch it up a little bit for next year, so if you could email me your preferences before. Monday at 5 o'clock, that would be terrific before our discussion on committees next Tuesday.
Perfect. The study session is adjourned at 7:11 PM.